Not received any, has anyone else received any communications? Right, and moving on, if you have no presentations, public comments. We have no one in touch with Paul this evening, we'll move online.
Two online. Um, Amboy and Dr. Anderson.
Okay, do they have their hands up? Hi, Dan.
Hi, I don't see Bob if he is up on the dais. Oh, there's Bob.
We'd love to, because I'd like to be in there, but it won't work.
It won't work, okay, all right, well, thank you.
The camera won't change. Not adjusting, okay?
Does that mean the cat laid in our?
You're in the picture. So you'll just have to, you know.
Right.
Well, you can replace me with Bob.
Okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion to close public comments.
Well, fanboy didn't have anything?
That was her comment. Okay, so seconded by Moore.
Sure.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public comment is closed at 7:02. Moving on to approval of minutes, we have our 310, 25 minutes and our 331, 25 minutes. Thank you, Bob Walsh.
So I did not have a copy of the 331 minutes in the.
It didn't go in the.
The link is there, but it was pending.
And it didn't get uploaded, right? Okay, well, then we'll just do the 331 minutes. Or the 310 minutes, sorry. Because I got that, sorry, I apologize, I got Bob's minutes and I got it uploaded, so, okay. Um, 310, any revisions?
Move to approve the 310, the minutes of 310, 2025.
Second, Hyde and Hindle, any further discussion? All those in, oh, okay.
I could.
Chair. Yes, Commissioner Moore. All right, and we'll go ahead, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, all right, the minutes are of 310, 20, 25 are approved as posted. We have no public hearings, so we're going to move on to our unfinished business, accessory solar discussion.
So, we talked about this at our last meeting, we talked about setbacks and whether we wanted to provide an exemption for side and/or rear setbacks. We also talked about height and where the height of the panel, if it approached, would it be the total height or just the portion that it encroached? We talked about how we've only had two variances for these types of structures and there are other accommodations for rooftop solar in areas that maybe are smaller yards. And I think after all of that discussion, it just, it seemed to me that there were members of the planning mission that just wanted to think on those those items a little longer, and so I guess, Ms. Chair, I'd open it up for further discussion for the, for the commission at this time. We're just looking for directions so that we can finalize the draft to your liking.
Yeah, so. So, the basic key elements are height and, and then the setback, I think most of the discussion was, I didn't see, it was rear as opposed to sides, because the sides vary so much, and that would be more consistent with the deck encroachment that is allowed.
So the key elements from height, and do we decide not to do the setbacks on the sides?
I mean, we could further discuss it, but it seemed like because some of the setbacks are getting pretty, you know, small on the sides, that generally there's more room for separation with the rear setbacks.
And one of the other things about the side was, the comment was that it could be near another building, which could be near their side plot line and you might get shaded, so you don't, you never know.
Or someone could build something adjacent to a side setback that could shade here.
It could be.
So.
Right now, we're recommending what as a setback?
You haven't recommended any. Right now, whatever district you're located in, you have to meet the setbacks of that district. So, for example, in agriculture, it's a 50-foot rear yard and a 30-foot side yard, you have to meet that, there's no encroachment allowed. So the discussion is, would you want to allow an accessory solar structure to locate in a, within a required setback?
In a different setback than the district.
Yeah, and if you do, what is that? We do allow decks to be 10-foot encroachment into a rear yard setback, but decks are typically at, at ground level.
Close to.
Or close to it, so, you know, you don't have a 10 or 12 or 16-foot structure within the setback, so I think that's, that's what we're talking about.
I think, for example, the bag at the 50 feet is a little aggressive personally. I think it could, could be narrowed and, and softened.
And what is the least rear yard setback is 30?
I'll look it up.
I think it's. MR or R1, R2 or through R4 are 35, small lots, 35.
So I could even say something like, you know, could encroach not less than 30 feet in a rear yard setback, you know, that, you know, so that it could only approach five feet.
More than 30.
Yeah, it, that, that.
It has to be.
It has to be at least 30 foot, 30 foot over, yeah, yeah, and so you could go five feet if you had a 35-foot setback. And so that will give you at least 65 feet, or if there were two arrays, 60 feet in between the arrays, which is a pretty good distance.
I guess I've been looking at this lot size, you add 50 feet, but if you're at A1, you're at a minimum of two and a half acres, you've got space. My concern on the setback is we're adjusting R2 through R4, smaller lots.
Yeah.
You know, you go to the 35, if you're on a small lot or your neighbor's.
It's, it's difficult for, yeah, it's difficult for me to to think of creating a rule or a standard that's, that would cover all the districts. That, that's where I'm struggling with, I mean.
Well, it, it could be. I think what Bob is saying is kind of where I'm sitting at.
Well, there's not that much difference between all the districts, i.e. and like he just said, it's 35.
It's 10, 3, 35 or 50.
50, you know, so.
Most, most of the lot sizes are fairly large, and again, as Laura mentioned, discussed before, we actually don't have to do, I mean, we can let things stand.
We don't have to do what?
We don't have to give relief. I mean, it's been twice in six years, the ZBA perspective.
Well, we had, we had an application, which denied, that's what I was just saying.
Yeah.
Oh, you included in that?
Yeah, we had two in six, yeah, in six years, in ZBA, so.
But I'd like to make it easier for folks to put in renewable sources. Yeah, I think it's a matter of how, how close, right?
Yeah, and especially if, you know, we have a lot of, and people like their tree, and so forth, it gives, you know, a little bit more flexibility.
Yeah, I think I said at another meeting, I mean, I don't want to preclude people that are on smaller lots, not giving them take advantage of technology. Problem is, maybe they have to put theirs on their growths, then we don't have to deal with the same thing.
If it's oriented the right way.
If the houses.
I mean, if you're putting it in the ground and you're trenching, trenching, that adds considerable cost.
I mean, I have a one-acre lot and a little, and I have no, I have virtually no place for solar.
Even on the roof.
Even on the roof.
What is your best, it would probably only be in the front.
You got a mansion on that place?
Like the canopy.
Trees. It's less than 700 feet.
Well, you just have trees down on it, probably. Oh, you don't want to do that.
But anyway, but that's just an example of, you know, that sometimes the roofs don't, aren't, don't have good exposure and you have very limited. Because your open space often is your septic field and, well, you can't do anything there.
She'd have to tear somebody's house down, or a neighbor's house down.
Plus, I wouldn't be able to put it up because of repairing slope, anyway. No, we haven't had one of those, that'd be interesting. I wonder how.
That would cheer a waitress.
I'm sorry. I mean, I would like to have a little bit of flexibility for folks that, you know, have smaller lots and, you know, or, you know, wooded lots and so forth, so that we, I mean, do say, this is an important element of us getting to carbon neutrality.
Right, sorry, can we look at it? We give the porch because we want people to enjoy the rural aspect of the township. That could be a part of it, can we just say that we consider the solar array and the township wanting to be more environmentally friendly in a similar light and just say, we've got a previous exemption of 10 feet with a, with a deck. This fits in the same category. And rather than worry about all the different districts, just say, we don't see it any different than a deck, whatever the exemption is, because it's part of what we as the township want our fellow residents to enjoy.
10 feet's getting a little close for an array.
10 feet, setback. You go into the setback.
Okay, so that would be, that would be a 25-foot, right?
Insertion order, 40 and the other, yeah. Yeah, 10 feet right up against the house, you have to angle it just right.
No, I meant.
Yeah, no doubt.
What if you're only 10 feet from the property?
Then you can't put one in, can you? Sometimes it is impossible.
Although they may now on the, on surface on, on basis of.
You have to go to the ZBA. Yeah.
Yeah, because I think we talked about making sure that it was a substantial property right, you know, to, you know, establish that piece and and then I think it's, it's the discussion, if people are comfortable with it going, you know, 10 feet in or just saying it has to be, you know, you have to maintain a rear setback not less than 30 feet. It, the other thing is the height, a two, a stack two panel is 12 feet. You know, that is higher than a deck would be, and it does have a little more impact on someone's visual view, it could.
Yeah, so maybe if we let them get into, I, I'm sort of rethinking how I thought of it last time, and that is, if you're encroaching into the setback, you shouldn't be double high, I mean, you shouldn't be allowing, I don't think you should allow extra height because you are now closer to the neighbors, you are making it stand out more, perhaps, and so there's my thought. If you, if you're setback within your regular area, what is the outbuilding or accessory structure height?
Is the same height as the principal structure, so there isn't, there isn't a lesser height.
So it wouldn't be limiting them there, but if you start getting into the.
The setback, I wouldn't want anything more than 12 foot.
Right.
In, in the setback.
Right, that's the double high.
Yeah, that would be the double, that would be another one of the double. Yeah.
That would be higher than this room.
But 10 feet in, they could have something as high as the house.
Yeah, where you are.
No, they could only have a deck.
No, no, if, if you were within the setback, the accessory building could be.
Sorry, yes, sorry.
Aesthetically, 10 feet makes huge difference.
I mean, you know, you could be, but functionally, 35.
10 feet into the setback. So 12 feet, people are thinking is okay to be set into the setback by 10, you know, throwing long numbers out there, but you can be into the setback and still be 12 feet high.
I sort of like the 30-foot, you know, rather than saying, okay, if you're closer together, you know, you can't encroach quite as much, it, it does, it is counter to giving people with smaller lots more flexibility, but it does offer, create that standard buffer.
But if we're worried about the height, saying it's 30, maybe bigger lot, which has a normally 50, you're giving them 20 feet, so you're giving them an extra 10 feet back towards the line.
That's true.
If we're worried about the aesthetics, I. Well, if it's in a bigger lot, then your neighbors probably have a bigger lot too. And again, my neighbors, they're like you, their house is in the shade and the cost of trenching a line from where they have, they're on eight acres, where they have a spot that would get it to put it in is prohibitive. I had a neighbor who put in hers and where they had to put the panel was on the front of the house and the solar array went on the back, in the backyard, and they just, you know, they were tractional boarded and, you know, she said it wasn't that expensive, I don't know, in the overall price of a solar system, solar array system, that would be much extra. So they easily, they didn't have to dig on the surface down.
Yeah, well, I'm just interested, why don't we just kind of say, kind of go down where people, where people are at? None, 10-foot?
I thought it was on deck.
You're on deck.
No, I think 10 feet is reasonable. When you say that it's a 10-foot.
Encroachment with a 12-foot bass.
Right, yes.
What do you think is him or, or?
Um, I'm concerned about some of the pitfalls in this, we're trying to manage this. I, I, I don't think that, I mean, I would like solar to be available to people with smaller lots, so that's, that's not my shtick, but I'm really concerned about how do we, how do we regulate this without creating winners and losers? I mean, right now, we got losers that don't meet the district's requirements, each district's requirements, and now we're going in and we're saying, well, we're going to give it to a couple more people, a couple hundred more people, or whatever that is, but there's only so much we can do, and I'm just wondering what the downside of that is. I'm not opposed to 10-foot encroachment and 12-foot height limit, I'm just those concerns give me problems.
I'm all for it. Your neighbor's view ends in the property line, sorry, I mean, I'm, I'm all about being a good neighbor, but at the same time, I'm, you know, want to allow people this opportunity, and I think things are going to continue to increase as far as efficiencies, so they're going to get better and better, panels are going to get smaller. They're not the most attractive, but.
Are you suggesting for A1 that it should be more than 10 feet, because I thought you started going down that path? Instead of 50 feet, encroaching 40, should it be the same as the others, 35?
I mean, I personally think it could be, but no, I don't know how everybody else feels about that, no, and I mean, I don't know if you want to start going like per, you know, A1, ER, et cetera. Definitely needs to be looked at per district, I think it could, you know, although, like, for example, where I am, you know, A1's across the street, I'm ER, you know, so that's really is kind of moot there, I guess. State official, two and a half acres left.
Seven, seven seconds.
Yeah. Substacks. Bob, and then Bob.
I'm Bob.
I'm not opposed to the 10-foot encroachment, 12-foot height, I'm getting back to, it's been two and six years on the ZBA. I, I don't feel pressured that this is something we have to decide right away, if people are having concerns, that I need to think this through a little more, you know, I'm happy to vote yea on a 10 and 12, but I don't think this is a pressing issue.
With this one, help the people that were denied recently.
I'm trying to remember, yeah, it was, it was 35 and 50, probably, they probably would have, but.
I'll look it up while you spin.
I'm not opposed to it either, having additional 10-foot into the setback and allowing trouble height. But I do have a question, is there some language that we could put into the ordinance that would help the ZBA find the means to approve additional or other variances, like, I mean, if we, if we said something in there about it being for the benefit of the township meeting its goals to, to have people install solar arrays so that, would the ZBA be able to latch on to something like that to find, allow?
Well, I don't, I don't want to speak for Bob, but just want to interject for a second, so there are very specific criteria that the ZBA has to.
And I haven't been on ZBA, so I haven't paid attention.
So there, you know, basically, variances can be granted when there are unique physical circumstances related to a specific property, so it's on a case-by-case basis, and it's based on the peculiar, the peculiar layout, unique characteristics of that particular parcel, it's wooded, like Jan's lot. The septic field is in the only location where you could get the, the sun, the south sun. Some peculiar, you know, peculiar circumstance, saying, saying that we support that doesn't necessarily affect that, that criteria. And just while.
Might be less.
Excuse me?
More might be less with regard to liability.
With regard to the last.
Or less might be best.
It's okay, they were asking for 12 feet, so this wouldn't have even, they still, they still would have had to have a variance.
This wouldn't have.
It wouldn't have been as big, they could have, they might have been able.
With a 10-foot reduction, it wouldn't have. Still wouldn't have.
So what happens when someone comes to, we, let's say we put this in 10 feet, 12 feet, and someone comes to the ZBA for a variance? And the argument is, and they're denying because the regs don't employ what they want, and they assume the township because you're favoring the disparate treatment, you're favoring one citizen over another. You, you allow this 10-foot encroachment.
Why would they do that?
Well, because they don't meet the 10-foot. And, you know, they would say.
Zoning ordinance, zoning.
Yes, yeah.
If they don't need it, that's.
No, but we're changing it.
No, but if, if we change it and they're within, the ordinance says it never gets to the ZBA, Laura goes, stamp approved. If we change it and they go, I want 15 feet instead of 10, then it comes to the ZBA and the ZBA looks at it and we go through the same criteria Laura just described.
And what does the effect of, presuming, I, I don't know if this is true, I might be making an assumption here, that our ordinance would say it's a property right? But let's say it does say it's a property, now you're going to tell a citizen that they can't, you tell me I got a, solar's a property right, but I can't put solar, because you diced it and sliced it a certain way, that I can't put slow, solar on my property, but it's a property right? That's vacant for the.
So it's a building.
I mean, that's, that's what the zoning ordinance does. It'll, it gives you, you know, you have certain property rights within the confines of the ordinance, and when you can't meet the standards of the ordinance, that's when you ask for a variance from the zoning board of appeals, and they use their criteria to determine whether or not you meet the, the sniff test, right? But there's some, so, but if you don't meet it and you, and they deny you, then you can go to circuit court and you can fight that and ask for a fee, yeah.
I'm, I'm just raising a, a concern then, are we opening up ourselves to that kind of litigation?
I don't believe so.
Taken on one, and it won because, not on solar, but on a different, my understanding is, secondhand, that we follow the criteria, the circuit court agreement, that we follow the criteria and and it's, and, and the subject, yeah, variance projections of hell.
Is there a way to write in the ordinance that potential, you know, going into 10 feet up to 12 feet high? But would have to be, you know, somehow, there's a little bit more discussion or something like that, or.
No, I mean, if the ordinance says you're allowed to go 10 feet and it can be 12, that's it, I mean, that's.
We could say it, it needs to be, it needs to have, it, it needs to have plantings underneath it and not, you know, you could, you could just make a requirement.
Big grass.
Right, or you could say it had to have native plantings under it.
Well, you, you can say that, but, so again, you have to, you want an ordinance that's enforceable, and so they could, I could say, you need to demonstrate you're going to have plantings underneath it, and they can show me a pretty plan that has plantings, but they have no intention of planting them, and no one goes out to inspect it and no one's going to know.
Right.
So I would, I would personally, you know, I, as the person that has to approve these, I would like for you to make it a very clear, simple.
Homeowners as opposed.
Yes, these are not business owners.
Have other townships allowed, you know, more flexibility?
So, my, so, the other one that I deal with most is Pittsfield Township, roof solar is an accessory, just like it is here. Solar, even if you're, a raise, even if you're just a homeowner, is a special, so you're actually much friendlier in that respect.
So, Pittsburgh, they call it land use?
It's a special.
A special land.
So we have to come to the planning commission, you go to a public hearing like you do for conditionally, the same thing as a conditional land use.
A lot.
Yeah. But again, 95% of the ones I review are just mine.
So, I think.
Yeah, how many people have, sorry, how many people have ever come to you and said, hey, where's, where can I put my solar and, you know, I really like it here and, you know, can you?
I've had several conversations about, and we talk about.
Really need like 10 more feet.
Then they go to the, I mean, that's when they go to the, to the ZBA, there's only been two that have requested.
That actually put forward.
Yeah, that couldn't, that couldn't meet, that, that couldn't. Yeah, that couldn't, that couldn't meet, that, that couldn't meet the setback.
How many actually came and talked to you about it though?
Didn't.
They forward it, didn't put forward, yeah.
I can't recall very many. The majority of them are, are roof. Our majority.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's out of sight.
Well, I mean, I mean, when you're talking about these smaller parcels.
On the roof?
Yeah. And when you're talking about these.
First cost.
Really? And when you're talking about these smaller parcels, they're likely to want to have roof solar anyway. They don't wanna encumber their small yard.
Right.
With a, a red, right.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think basically what this does is it gives some people flexibility that have more issues, right? With shading and rays and, you know, so to me, it's more of a uh, natural, you know, natural features preservation piece that allows a little flexibility if, if you have. Because like you said, it's gonna be more expensive if, if it's further away from your house. You know, just to, you know, to get it there and so forth, so it, it really, in my mind, it's, it's a flexibility.
So what if, um, what if they only went eight feet, would you give them more encroachment?
Well, they only went eight feet high, they get more.
Not such a billboard for your neighbors.
Right.
Yeah, and it, it makes a big difference what, you know, if it's the, you know, the panel under the backend, you know, could, yeah.
I don't know what should be worse.
I thought, do people wanna continue to think about it or, I mean, it, it seems like people, I, I've heard a lot of people that are, are there to say, yeah, make a recommendation.
Why don't I, why don't I take a stab at writing the 10 foot encroachment with a 12 foot maximum height? And I'll bring it back and then we can talk about it again. How about that?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Um, moving on to bylaws.
In your packet, Kim graciously provide us, provided us with a conflict of interest article that she put together um, previously. Mariah has vetted it, what you have in your packet is Mariah's notes regarding it and so I'll let you discuss it. If you want me to go through it, I can, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
I like it.
So I have a couple of questions.
Okay, we'll try to answer them, but you might have to talk to Mariah.
So with regard to section 11 point oh subsection four. Yep, so I see that, um, Ms. Fink deleted or by the remaining commissioners of the planning commission.
Yep.
Um, and her comment was that she didn't want, she didn't like this language because it could be used to block a commissioner from voting on something without a valid reason.
Yes.
So I would propose. So here's my, here's my, um, here's my my concern. Uh, where it says there's a reasonable appearance of a conflict of interest is determined by the planning commissioner declaring a conflict. In my language is to say, or by remaining commissioners of the planning commission. I don't understand. So in other words, there's not a vote yet. Instead, right here, there's the question, do you declare, don't you declare? And if it's only left up to, to the commissioner to declare and a planning, another planning commissioner could not raise that issue, I'm, I could have concerns about that language being cut off like that, that's what I was trying to get to.
I think you can raise that issue, but I think she's saying you can't force it to be a declaration, you can bring it up and you can discuss it. But Mariah is not wanting you to. I don't know whether it's right or wrong, but that's what she's saying, she's just gonna want you to be able to force it as a declaration to vote on it.
Well, so that's, that's, but she didn't get rid of that language at the bottom.
Right.
In other words, in, at the bottom paragraph, line one, two, three, four, abstention is required if a vote of 60% of remaining planning commissioners agree that the commissioner may be reasonably considered to have a conflict of interest or if there's a reasonable appearance of a conflict, that's where the vote language is in. Right here, we're just talking about in subsection four, we're just talking about there is a reasonable determination that there is, or, or there, the question that there is impossible um, conflict of interest. Um, and in a way this language is, is only the person, the declarant, as we say in law, themselves would make that call. If they don't declare it a reasonable appearance of a conflict of interest, then it stops there. In my language, a commissioner could inquire about that.
And the original language said it could be a member of the public that would bring it up.
And I'm fine, she took that, I'm fine leaving the public out, sorry public. But, but I think at the very least, a commissioner should be able to bring it up.
To raise.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's the way it is in the, I think the BOT, isn't it?
No, we, we need to adjust those.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I would have a problem with it being raised. I mean, and what she's worried about is if you have a very contentious um, commission, you could have a block that actually.
Is unreasonable.
Is, yeah, and misuses the, the conflict of interest.
But you.
But boy, then you have more problems, I think.
Right, sorry, but. I mean, you have to have another way to question that issue other than the commissioner in question. Didn't, you know, the person that can raise that.
Yeah, what would have to happen is you could still raise it, but it wouldn't come to a vote unless the person agreed.
To declare it.
To declare it.
You can still talk about it. I don't think she's ruling that out.
I don't like that either.
Okay, I agree.
Because you don't even get to the vote if you don't have to declare it.
Right, right.
I mean, the, the flip side of that is one person can block it. Can block it. I mean, if it's real, it's real, I mean, I don't, trust me, I get human politics, man, it's not as simple as that, but I don't know how we can manage that, that, that outlier situation, you know? So I would like that put back in. I, I actually encourage the language the public could bring into the attention because commissioners may not be aware of the conflict. When the public bear.
Public can bring it up.
Can just bring it up.
Yes. It doesn't force.
They, they don't, they just can't force anything in the meeting. No, they can't force a vote, they can't force a declaration, right.
And they would always have the opportunity to bring it up in public comment, which would, would be where they would need to bring it up anyway. So I don't think, uh, uh, whether you need to explicitly say you can bring it up or not, I mean, we can't really restrict public comment that way. I would, I, and that might be, was that kinda what you were thinking by, uh, putting the public in? I, I don't know, because.
I think she's asking you.
Yeah, I, I think the public is a valuable resource. I, I always thought of myself that way, I, you know, I want things to be fair, transparent. But i- i- in thinking about it, the, I think the, did the original language say the public?
Yeah, did.
So I mean, I wonder if that's appropriate for our bylaws.
Public only has limited opportunities to comment. And they've gotta stay with it, and I, that was Jan's point, whether it's the initial comment overall, or if we're addressing something that we're gonna vote on, there's a public hearing, the public actually will have the opportunity to comment that they think a commissioner has a conflict of interest.
Then we would discuss it.
And then we would discuss it amongst ourselves.
And then they would either declare it, we vote on it, or they would say, no, I don't wanna declare that I have a conflict and we can't vote on it. Be meddled with.
I, I also think, you know, because this body is appointed and not elected, that I would hope that there's less contention in you know, and, and I, I don't think I, I, I could see it being more contentious than a, you know, in, in the board of trustees than perhaps in the planning commission, with, you know, keeping this in.
Keeping what is?
Your, or by remaining commissioners of the planning commission. I mean, keeping that, that in. But.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I think that's important. And I, 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 I waver on the public piece of, I understand what you're saying.
It alerts the public that they have a, a right to bring it up. I mean, it's not that they can't do it, it, I mean, they have to do it at the appropriate time.
And, um, in the bottom paragraph of, I'm fine with, uh, the language change in section 11 point one. But in the last paragraph, any commissioner who has a conflict in section 10 and subsection four, commissioner, so what's commissioner declaring a conflict or any other commissioner or a member of the public, they ask. So I don't like this language may. One of the things that I don't like about it is the, the former line takes away for any other commissioner, first of all. So if, again, if the, if the identified commissioner with a possible conflict decides that declaring, well, it just kinda take that out. So, so now it just reads that any commissioner who has a conflict in section 10 or may ask the remaining commissioners to decide if the commissioner in question should abstain. So it's this, it's the same kind of control issue that we had in the preceding pair, or, or up in, um, this language here in subsection 10, I'm sorry, 11 point zero four, where we say only the, the commissioner in question can declare, if they choose not to, that's it. Instead of the other commissioners can bring it into question. And then down here, we say only the commissioner who has a conflict in subsection four may ask the.
Cause it would have to stay.
Commissioners decide if the commissioner in question should abstain. You understand, and then abstention is required if the vote is expelled. But so the same problem is who's in control of that decision, if you will. Up here in, in subsection four of section 11 point three, it's only the commissioner in question controls whether or not she or he declares, and I'm saying it should be uh, or, or the remaining commissioners. And then down here, when we talk about the vote of subsection four, only the commissioner in that decides whether or not they have a.
They either just declare the conflict and then, then recuse themselves, or they can ask the commission to vote, but there isn't, what you're saying is there isn't an opportunity if you keep the that it's okay for.
If you strike that language, it's only that commissioner in question still has the control of whether or not there's a vote. And I don't agree with that either. Yeah, so for the board of trustees, the language is a person may declare, but the majority can say, no, we don't accept your conflict.
Right.
So we're saying the same thing. And I'm just saying in, in.
They could say, you could, the, so they can't just, the, you, someone could raise what called the question.
For political contributions. The clerk and I wanted to abstain based on a contribution. There was a lot of discussion from the other members that they didn't think it was a conflict. I didn't.
Sure.
So they, they voted.
To allow you to vote.
And that's fine. They voted to allow me to abstain, whereas they could have voted to not allow me to abstain. Okay, but they had the choice. Right here, this, both of these paragraphs, section 11 point zero subsection four and section 11 point one, the last paragraph, don't allow that. The commissioner in question has all the control, whether or not he or she wants to declare. And secondarily, whether he or she wants a vote. And I'm saying your commissioner should be able to weigh in on that as well. I mean, we did that before.
Based.
We didn't vote, but you took a survey about, um, Commissioner Risers potential conflict. And, you know, and I think.
We kind of gave them ta- feedback and.
Yeah.
And then it was, it sort of just.
We decided it wasn't a conflict, but I'm just saying, we should not get rid of that. That's what this language does in both these areas.
And it also should be with whatever you're thinking of with the trustees, it would be nice if the conflict of interests were similar, you know? So that, that the, the way you handle conflict of interests within the boards of commissioners and then SIO are, is would be consistent.
We'll be doing ours before they do theirs. No, actually we do that.
No, did, did, well, did, did Mariah say anything? You know, she, she kinda wrote a little bit of a comment here, but I'm wondering.
I mean, I can't speak for Mariah, but, uh, you know, I've taken some notes, I understand the, the conversation. I'm gonna go back to her and, and ask her about this because it is different. I mean, this is, this is what Kim provided, so it is, it was already different from what was in our, um, current bylaws. Um, but I also will ask her about having similar um, language as the BOT, she just referred on that.
Align them. So the, the thing about her issue, that she didn't like it with regard to this subsection four because it could use to block a commissioner from voting on something without a valid reason. Well, yeah, voting on a project without a valid reason.
Anything.
So they would still, that commissioner would be able to vote on whether or not it should be conflict or not.
Right.
Still vote on that, right?
Okay.
I think it's a, it's the opposite of what the board of trustees, because I understand what Commissioner Grant was saying. In that ca- in the case of, of contributions, you declared and they voted, no, we're not gonna, you, well, they could have said that you can't vote or you can vote, you can be part of it or you can't. They, but now in this case, it's where we're trying, or this language that we're discussing is to say that they aren't going to declare and the rest of us get to decide, yes, uh, we, you, we are going to have you declare it.
No, what's different is in this situation, the rest of the board of trustees got to weigh in. They disagreed with their declaration that they had a conflict.
Person had to declare, right. Now in this case, they're saying, I'm not gonna declare, and then the rest of us could say, yes, you are, we're gonna force you to and take a vote to not allow you to.
Well, I would say that we're not gonna force the commissioner to declare. We're gonna.
Gonna do the vote.
We're gonna declare that it's a conflict.
Yeah, we're gonna have to vote on whether or not it's a conflict, we can't force the commissioner to declare, because he, he doesn't wanna declare. But if there's enough people that think that there, there's concern, then it goes to a vote.
I understand what you're doing, I just wanted to point out, it's the opposite. In one case, they're declaring and we're saying, no, that's okay. And in the other case, they're not declaring, but we're, the rest of us saying, yes, it matters, so we're gonna, we're gonna.
I didn't say agreed with the board.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, the, that it's voluntary to declare. Person may not declare, but it's an obvious conflict. So if, I'm gonna understand based upon what Commissioner Hyde just said, your current conflict of interest policy says that the trustee can or doesn't have to declare. They declare and then there's a vote from the board on whether that conflict stands or they can abstain. Okay, so as it stands, the trustees that get wind of the conflict and you don't declare, they could not force that issue onto the table. I don't think so. Which to me, that's a gap.
Yeah, I like, yeah, I like it, your. Yeah, I like, yeah, I like your language. Don't get me wrong.
Do you understand? I'm just pointing out that I'm just there.
Same situation.
I mean, the other thing that I could see coming up where you could, where, you know, a person just declaring there's no vote, that's also a way a person can get out of voting on a controversial issue. Which I've seen happen, not here, but.
Yeah, this is not what this is meant for, right? You still have to meet, you still have to either be a relative or a family member that's involved.
Well, reasonable appearance.
Yes, or reasonable appearance, but, but, but there's, these are still the criteria that have to be met. You can't just say, you know, Laura, you know, I don't vote, but I saw you having lunch with uh, this person and I know that they're going to come to the planning commission for a project, but I, I don't even, I mean, how do you know I?
That brings up a good point. Did I have lunch with Steve Flower?
I don't know, could you?
With who?
Steve Flower. Where he pays for it. Are you gonna?
Lunch with him.
I mean, are you related to him? Or if you have a financial interest in the project or his business? I mean, then it still goes back to those things. You, you could disclose that you're, you're friends or your neighbors or whatever, but that doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean that you meet the criteria of a compliment.
We're lunch buddies.
Well, it doesn't mean that you meet the, the conflict of interest. You could, you should say, Steve and I have lunch on Tuesdays.
Oh, I should declare.
You can declare it, but that doesn't, but that doesn't make it a conflict of interest.
Yeah, I think there's something a little bit here where one, a person can just declare it and then abstain as opposed to declare it and then either it gets confirmed or not confirmed. You know, I, I, I sort of like that process because one of the things it does is then it makes it a more open discussion, meaning that people can bring things up that they may not be sure of or, and, and the other commissioners can bring things up that someone may not have thought of, or the public. It seems a little more transparent in a way, or encourages transparency. Because some things, you know, I think after a discussion like the trustees had, yeah, that, that, that really isn't a conflict. Or, yeah, we really do think that this is a conflict because I'm, and it's there, it's not black and white most of the time. It's, it's very gray and I don't know. Well, and if, if the trustees are moving toward where it's confirmed or not confirmed, that I don't have an issue with being in alignment with that.
Well, I'll have another conversation with Mariah.
But I do like the idea of having it in alignment.
Yes.
So that there's a standard of ethics that.
They're working on changing their own policy. I mean, we don't even know what they're.
Well, it sounds like Mariah's working on it.
It's the same label as life. So I just have a, uh, bring this to a close. I just have a statement, I feel like, I've been thinking about this for, since this issue came up. And I always want to be on the record as saying I have the utmost respect for Jan Corbinson. Um, I have learned a lot, I continue to learn a lot from her, and I believe she's the right person to chair this committee. So this issue has nothing to do with any one person or Jan Corbinson. It's an issue that I felt we needed to take a closer look at. And, um, I haven't had a chance to have that conversation with you, but I hope that you knew that knowing me. But, um, so I just want to go over and say that.
Well, I want to, I want to thank you and I think it's really important to, you know, because, because we talk about a lot of different things. And I think having, building relationships with people really helps. So thank you very much.
Oh, sure.
All right, so not resolved yet, but we're going. All right, um, moving to a discussion of, uh, the landscape ordinance.
How did you guys slot that in there? Shut it up now, no, we're planners forever.
We are not going to make best booking.
Oh, yeah. This is, this is the, this is an opening discussion. Not to, uh, and, and I, what, all right, the, the first, uh, the first page is, first and second page is, it is, that's what I wrote just as, um, thinking about how, how we might want to discuss it. The, the other attachments are, it was an example that, um, Doug Lawan gave us of a township, I don't know if it's a township or a city.
Springfield Township.
Township. Um, that, um, has a very, has a very, um, pro-native landscaping ordinance and it has several components to it.
Invasive species?
Yeah, it has invasive species, it has the native landscaping, it has, yeah. And, and so that would be sort of, um, a progressive model, I guess you would, you could call it. And, and so the discussion really is a little bit about why, okay? And I think, you know, first of all, we have to agree that you, you know, is, is native, it, it promoting native landscape an important part of, uh, a zoning ordinance? Um, because you can look at native landscaping in two different ways. There can be a requirement or there could be a lot of education, like at the pre-app meeting where you promote it, but don't require it. And then there's sort of an extent where, um, it's a, um, you know, sort of you specifically re-do, you restrict turf grass to certain, uh, functional areas. There can be a requirement of just, you know, a, a certain percentage of native plantings within the site plan. There can be, yeah, and then there's sort of encouraged but not required. And so part of it was, one, is this something that we want to require? Is this something that we want to promote? Is, and, uh, at what level of kind of requirement? Just to try and get a, a sense. And then the, the, um, Springfield ordinance talks about two other components. One, preservation of existing native habitats, which requires kind of a survey of, of existing. We right now require a tree survey. This would require a survey of, you know, sort of native plants. Then there's the, also the invasive species control, which requires then if you have an existing, you know, native habitat, you need to do the removal. So it gets into quite a bit of regulation. Yeah, yeah, exactly, exact. So, you know, just trying to think and get people's, um, get people starting to think about, you know, one, what is our, our goal? You know, do we agree with the, you know, the importance of native planting and then the extent of regulation?
Can I ask a, a short question, which is the requirement of native, native planting or not having invasive species? Would that fall on the rent, the homeowner to remove?
This, this would be for site plan, this would be site plan approvals. Or it could also apply to, um, private, um, you, you could, uh, apply it to, uh, private roads. Common spaces within HOA, you know, subdivisions or something like that, but it wouldn't, you know, it would be a whole different ordinance to.
It wouldn't be a single family.
It wouldn't be retroactive. So it's for new developments. Pretty much.
So, um, my take on it is that we should put some restrictions in and I'll take the avenue, the angle of invasive species. Nurseries and big box stores are selling invasive species. The Japanese pachysandra, I just saw it on Craig Road. I went off the road to go see what it was. It came from somebody's yard. So if we can restrict developments from putting these invasive species in, which they think of as ground covers, as ornamentals, a Japanese barberry is put in as a, an ornamental. I have no idea why, because it's, it's a nasty little plant with spikes on it. I've taken four out from my lot. So I would like to go along those directions of limiting, um, because obviously retail commercial trade is not going to limit themselves. They, they make it worse, take out native habitat with invasive.
So what it's saying is, yeah, make sure you regulate the invasive piece that's up, up the shore.
I would go even further to do native plantings, but that's, you know, I'm progressive on that topic.
So, okay, you live by me. Um, I view native plantings also as being, you know, food for our deer rats.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have an abundance of these rats around. Like a massive amount of them. I can't kill enough of. The, the, um, DNR can't beg me enough to kill. And my neighbors can't beg me enough to kill as many as possible. I've got six hunters out there every single day. Trying to kill because, and they come out and they're like, good God, you have so many deer here, it's disgusting. It's, they're, it's, it's unhealthy.
Twenty, thirty deer.
Oh, more than that.
Really, at a time?
And coyotes, you know, unfortunately, massive number of coyotes. That did take my one small dog, killed my one small dog and many chickens, but whatever, you know? Um, in mid broad, broad daylight, I don't know, with me outside too, but, I mean, I just, I'm, I'm all for this, but you know, how are you going to, again, you know, legislate and then make, you know, somebody, um, go out and, we, we just don't have the resources here at the township to go around and make sure that they're, they're planting the correct plantings, et cetera, and that they're getting rid of the invasive species and, I don't know, what would be for, just for.
So you'd vote.
I know, I know, I understand that, I understand.
And they actually go out and, and help plants.
Oh, I know.
I know.
Yeah.
I, I think, I would like to see the topic introduced to developers.
Sure.
And, and have a list and say, you really don't want to plant these things.
That's exactly what I was going to bring up. We should have a more definitive list than what Springfield Township did. They, they allowed you to go to several websites to make your choices. No, let's make, let's come up with lists and, and.
For sure encourage. And I think they want to too, because they don't want to spend the money, you know?
We have lists.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a landscape architect on staff, so I can provide an invasive list and I can invite, I can provide a, um, um, preferred planting list.
But to have the developer then identify everything, that, that, that to me, I think is kind of overstepping things.
Well, we can provide the list. I mean, maybe that's the first step, right?
Have my landscape.
For sure, but.
Submission, so.
I mean, it's, you know, they're, they're already identifying every single tree. And, you know, that's costly.
They're good at it.
But, well, this would be, you know, when a, when they're doing a landscape plan, a lot of native plantings can be, you know, the, the seed mixes and. So, I mean, I think a good places for those are, you know, the stormwater retention areas, you know, the bio swales, the, um, and I guess I'm more also a proponent of trying to limit turf grass in a way, because that is, is the, you, you know, and, you know, the required foundation plantings, you know, required planting takes could be made to be native as opposed to, or, or from the, you know, preferred planting list.
Did you see that native plantings on Liberty? West of Z last summer where they had poppies, orange poppies and kind of purple, purples and reds and it was beautiful. But those things you got to plant every year.
There's plenty of them.
I tried to see the half of, not half, a quarter of my yard. Nothing came out.
Got a lot of trees.
I have.
This was in the, in the end, we're still.
I also have a lot of pachysandra.
Oh, I get.
I have lots of pachysandra.
Yeah, but I, I just wanted to, I want to stop mowing and so I stopped doing that.
Yeah, so, okay, it sounds, I mean, I think definitely updating, uh, the invasive species list and coming up with a preferred planting list would be, would, would be a great start. And we could easily update the landscape ordinance because we have those, well, we don't have the preferred list, do we? We have the.
No, but we, I mean, we can update what we currently allow. You know, we have certain species and their sizes.
Yeah, I think, why don't we, let, let's start there. And, and then I think, um, maybe we can take a look at the intent and the intent. I think if it's in the intent, we can encourage native plantings. Um, and then we can, at the pre-app meetings, we can also give them some additional resources. Because both, I mean, most, uh, landscape architects, if they're using a landscape architect, uh, are tuned into that kind of thing. And I think, right, we can do a lot of that kind of thing. So we're encour- we're encouraging more than this, but in, in the reduction of turf grass, but we don't have to break any. And that's a faster do it because we do have some fuzzy invases in our plant, our, uh, through the plant. Great, great start, okay. All right, um, reports.
We will, we have a conditional rezoning on our next meeting. It is the former Parkville Plaza Senior Living Facility that is being proposed, um, as a conditional rezoning to MR3 for, um, multifamily development. It's the same developer as, um, the Menards Outlets there, the towns at Honey Creek. You'll have that at your next meeting.
Can I ask one question? I was looking at your report earlier and I see the Knights of Columbus is coming back. And I understand that they did do the hydro.
Yeah, so they, they did update their hydro geological.
Geological study.
Um, we actually have a meeting with them tomorrow.
You have a copy of that?
Um, that you can ask for at the township.
I can probably get you a copy.
Okay. It's probably in one of the packets. Probably one of the packets, but yeah, we can get that for you. Oh, yeah, we have a meeting with them tomorrow. They've requested just to meet with us to go over, um, uh, late last year, uh, planning, utilities, engineering, and Mariah sent a letter requesting additional information because they'd asked to go to the board. Um, and so we've asked for some additional information and we're going to meet with them tomorrow and see what the next steps are.
Oh, that'll be.
Yeah.
Okay, um, for the, the chair report, we are, um, continuing with the Jackson Road. Um, make, I hope everyone here has, um, filled out the survey. I just brought the maps that we were using for the pop-ups. We did one, um, uh, on Saturday at Cohousing, we're doing one on the 17th at, from seven to nine at Silent Farms. So if any of you want to come, you're, you're welcome to come, um, just to, so you can see some of the comments.
You could put it in the newsletter.
Yes. Yes, a pop-up for the Jackson Road corridor and we did it with AAA TA and, uh, The Wave. So they, um, the Wave and AAA TA gave a, a little bit of a presentation on their services. Um, it had a, how to use them and et cetera. And then we talked about the corridor and really I've learned a lot.
From transportation.
Or there's a lot to learn about transportation. So I, I think that's, that's really good. The next round will take place in May and we'll go back to those same spots for a pop-up and we'll do, actually, I, I want to do a pop-up. The next round will take place in May and we'll go back to those same spots for a pop-up and we'll do, actually, I, I want to do a pop-up. That'll be, uh, also a lot, uh, an open meeting here too, because that next one it will be, and, um, we'll have some options and, you know, some visioning and so forth. So there'll be more to actually respond to. Um, so, and they'll be done in June. That's good. And that's, because, yeah, um, Kathleen?
Sure, the board of trustees at the last meeting, March twenty-fifth. The Mini Hands Limonary PUD was approved and that was really based on they eliminated the deviation from the community waste treatment system. Um, also just informational, um, the fire chief is planning his second fire station. He's gone through a whole process of selecting uh, the architect and they're using a construction manager for risk. So they, we approved that, so he's clicking along with his schedule. He's doing a really great job, I believe.
CBA?
Something to report on March meeting, no April meeting.
Anything on the, the, the DDA? Did you snoop on them at all? I've been trying to use those words.
I, I do watch the DDA. Somebody's got to watch them.
I think you're the perfect person. Yeah, and I, I do.
They were not happy that the board took a couple of things out of their budget. My money, my money, more money, more money. Anyway, you need a joint discussion.
Right. And, and the, when I attended, when they were, you know, they're, uh, we did bring up the maintenance of you, you know, the, um,
The median?
The median and I think there, it sounds like they're going to take that on and including the
Yes.
Chuggling and so, but in the wintertime, they'll probably need to be a reminder. Um, there, and I really hope that, um, we can, maybe we need to do a pop-up at the DDA meeting, I don't know. But, um, it, I think the quarter study will provide a framework of quite a bit of investment that can be made over time. And I'm hoping that we can get the DDA to be involved in that framework as well as the planning commission and trustees. Uh, okay, um, anything, I haven't, I didn't even look at RAC and see if there was anything there. And LBC is meeting this Thursday. Um, PPP?
They didn't have a, a meeting in March. They're having one next. I think it's this week. Yeah, so they'll, they'll be meeting later this week. And here in the Watershed Council, we don't have.
Um, ESTF, we, um, working on, um, a, uh, working directly with Migraine Michigan for the composting proposal. Because it was, it was expensive to do, like work through the, um, the environmental council. Um, and just, uh, we we're adding to the map that's on the, oh, okay, um, we're adding to the map that's um, on the website with, uh, some additional farms. Uh, I think that, that's pretty much it. And, uh, Western Washon, you guys have a bet?
No, we're meeting April sixteenth.
Any other?
Just the one reminder, the county meeting on April tenth at four o'clock. You sent out the note.
I registered, is that what I'm?
Yeah, and if you registered, you should have got, you should have got a zoom link. Okay, great. Thank you for that. Okay.
But, you know, I was wondering, um, when you were asking who would be interested in participating in a growing basis, are you looking for, like, I don't have experience in solar and all, I mean, I don't have that technical knowledge. So I didn't know as much. That's what you were looking for.
I think it's, it's, um, I, I think it, I think we need a balance of people. You know, they'll provide some technical knowledge to support it, but I think it's important to have a I wanted a couple people to participate, because I think there, there's a range of concerns and so forth that, that that are generated. And so having someone that's totally pro-solar probably, you know, you want to have balance. So, I don't think it needs to be, I don't think they're, they're counting on us to be the the experts. They're counting on us to be to help, um, provide a template that, uh, people can advocate for.
Move to adjourn?
Uh, we have no comment, no one. We have no one here? Yep. We have one hand in them. Oh.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
A reference, the composting, I, I don't know a whole lot about what the township is trying to do. In fact, I don't really know anything about it. But I was talking to a friend who lives in a neighboring county. And the Village of Clinton, not Clinton Township, Michigan, so in Lenaway County. They do a public composting and they went through some changes to get themselves to a position where it is affordable to do and it works. I don't know who's in charge of that for our township, but it seems to me it might be well worth whoever is doing that composting to maybe reach out to somebody at the Village of Clinton. And perhaps even go and meet with them to see their setup, because it's on village property. And it apparently is working, because they had a company that was supposed to be managing it and it got really expensive and really messy and it wasn't working and now it is. So that was just my thought process is maybe it could be good information for our township to try. And save money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Now, move to adjourn? No, move to close, Bob.
All right, any, is there a second for closing public comment?
Okay, say move to close.
I did.
All right, um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great, public comment is closed at eight seventeen.
Move to adjourn?
Commissioner Hyde. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight-eighteen, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Who's second there?